Would you all please rise for the brief invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet as a city council, we are ever mindful of the many challenges that continue to face us, not only in Batavia but in the greater world around us. Our TVs and apps are full of all kinds of political news and all kinds of people expressing their opinions, and we are here to do what we think are in the best interest of the people of Batavia and in running the community. So that's our mission, and I'm very proud of the city council that we have assembled here because they truly do try to do that and are here to do what is in the very best interest of Batavia and its future. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask for a special blessing on each one of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. Also, we ask for direction and vision and understanding and goodwill on the part of the city council as we act on the items of business before them, knowing that in their hearts and minds, each one is here to do what is in the best interest of the community and their ward. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. So Alderman Thron, you want to lead some pledge?
The allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
George. Throwing the place up now. We got it. Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Deefer?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer? Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger. Twelve present, two absent.
We have the necessary corn to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, the reminder, if you're going to address the city council tonight on any subject, we'd ask that you come up and use the podium and specifically speak into the microphone because this is being recorded and will be replayed on BATV. If you don't speak in the microphone many times, it's very difficult for anybody trying to watch on TV to hear what you're trying to say. Moving to item number five, items to be removed, added or changed on tonight's agenda. Does anybody in the council have anything? Staff? Okay. Okay, moving then to item six, the consent agenda. And Alderman, Beck, do you want to read this or you want somebody else to do it?
No, I can take it. Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for August 27, 2024, and for approval, the September 26, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,038,826.59, the accounts payable check register in the amount of $3, 399,470.82, and the city council minutes for September 3, 2024. Resolution 2024-120-R, awarding a contractor's facility improvements to Everlast Blacktop Inc. for an amount not to exceed $470,000. Resolution 2024-122-R, approving a contract with electric conduit construction to perform 35-kilovolt underground circuit upgrade along Kirk Road between Hubbard Road and Douglas Road in the amount of $62,715,000, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Sorry, did somebody say something to me?
I think that was me coughing, sorry about that, Amy.
Okay, no problem. Order 2024-59, conditional use for motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used, internet-based, at 1183 Pearson Drive, Unit 108, Mohammed Asali, applicant. Resolution 2024-123-R, approval task order number six with V3 companies for the North River Street/Fox River Trail ramp design for an amount not to exceed $199,980. Resolution 2024-121-R, authorization to purchase a plow dump truck. Authorization 2024-60, declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing sale. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a motion by Alderman. Second, Alderman Lehman, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Deefer?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion is approved. All right, moving then to item seven, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Laura, you have something? Oh.
He's going to drive by.
We got anything to mention? Anybody in the audience? All right, then we will move to item number eight, which is going to be a presentation, an update on the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project, and we're very honored to have Jerry Ruth, who is one of the chief engineers with Trotter and Associates, and he's been the man who's kind of been spearheading a lot of this good work, and I've taken some looks at it recently, and it is very well done. So Jerry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. All right, hopefully everybody can see. So, update for September 2024. Lot of concrete, you're going to be hearing me say that a lot over the next year, concrete, concrete, concrete. Headworks elevated slab and retaining wall concrete, this is at the north end of the facility, so we're past the ground floor, elevated slab is cast, and we're casting the channel walls of the upper level for that building. Pipe installation underneath what will be the slab of the primary clarifiers is ongoing. The center column construction, which is a critical piece of the whole structure, is the keystone for them, so two of them are in place now. Primary clarifier control building, diversion structure and wet wells continue to go up, again, more concrete. The bike path retaining wall continues to be installed. We're getting closer and closer to having that bike path. We're not there yet. We ran into some snags, and I'll touch on that in a minute. And in the nitrification basin, so the main biological process inside the treatment plant, we bypassed the whole system and we replaced some critical isolation gates in those tanks just this past week. Everything was up and running by the end of the day Friday. No issues with the permits, no issues with the plant. So to run through some of these photos off-site, here's a picture that you may remember of the retaining wall if you've driven by. This is the upper retaining wall, there's a lower section of retaining wall, this is the transition between Primarko Drive and Water Street. And we were able to get the seeding down since we last spoke. Hydro seeded the whole area along Water Street, as well as planting all the trees, with a couple exceptions along the bike path that can't be planted yet. This is the elevated sections of concrete that I was mentioning. The slabs that you see in these pictures are at roughly 12 feet above grade, and the rebar sticking up, those will end up being the channel walls that will convey the raw sewage as part of this treatment process. Here's some more pictures of those channels. The formwork just takes a long time, place the forms, place the concrete, strip the forms, and continue on to the next pour. These are the two retaining walls that are on the north and south ends of the Headworks building. These will help separate the large grade change from the low side to the high side of the building on the north and south sides of the building. And this is what they looked like after the forms were pulled off. These are both of the retaining wall on the north side. One picture from inside, the elbow of the wall, and the other picture from the outside, what you'll see from Flynn Street. Here's the aerial on August 6, and the progress since then with the walls on the north and south sides, up here and over here, as well as the channel walls continuing to go up inside the building. Jumping over to the primary clarifier complex, so the excess flow diversion structure and raw sewage wet wells, they were hydrostatically tested and proved out, so they are watertight. And the piping ran between those and underneath the building, will eventually be put above it, is ongoing by the mechanical sub. These are the center piers in the center of the clarifiers, again, critical piece, so everything needs to be dialed in and accurate in terms of its location. The piping was put into the center of these center columns and hydrostatically tested any leaks when we pour the slab. There's a picture from August 6, the aerial. See in the next picture, we're starting to put rebar and forms down for the northwest corner, that's clarifier 404, and just to the below that, clarifier 403 is progressing as well. They intend to pour the slab within the next couple weeks, so by the next time we have an aerial, we'll see some concrete slabs in the pictures. This is the UV building, I sort of jumped a little quick there. Minor stuff going on in the UV building, this building is on hold, waiting until the equipment gets delivered, which is anticipated for next week. The milestone for having all of this done is January, so we're happy to say that we're a little bit ahead of schedule with getting this in place, but it is a lot of work to get the equipment installed. This is for disinfection of the flow before it enters Fox River. So there's a picture from August 6, and the picture from September doesn't really show a whole lot of progress, everything is going on either inside or just on the other side of this building. Again, the hydro seeding was done at this area as well. A cost update for progress, roughly 36% completion. The costs for engineering, just over $1.1 million, and for construction, just over $22.3 million. My mic, there we go. We have no updated numbers for the change orders, there is a change order that may be pushed through between now and my next presentation, but we are still in the, I think we right now have a negative number for our total change order for the project. Terms of schedule, I mentioned that the bike path, initially the goal was August, and I believe last presentation was by my boss Scott, who mentioned that we had intercepted a couple of 12-inch diameter roof drain pipes that were going through the area that were unmarked and unknown, so we had to pause, had to figure out what we could do. We coordinated with the manufacturer, the retaining wall, made sure that we could pass a pipe through it, and they said, "Not my wall." So we designed sections of concrete retaining wall that would be intercepting those pipes and allow the pipe to pass through. And so that did hold up the progress on it, but they do anticipate, now that they have that done, and they are in place now, by the way, the concrete, to be done with the bike path in October. The other milestones haven't moved, but as I mentioned, the UV equipment is going to be delivered next week. And that is the update for September, and I'll open the floor to questions. Thank you for your time.
Questions? Would you rate yourself as half-done, or are we more than half-done?
I'd rate myself right at 36%. I'm not going to, I'm not going to claim anything beyond that. It's slow-going for the first year of a three-year project, for sure. Everything's underground, nothing's really coming up, and now we're starting to finally get out of the ground, so you'll start to see some substantial changes on the aerials.
Well, the final product is going to be something that will be very good for Batavia and the surrounding world, everybody south of us and whatever, so.
Absolutely.
It will be something that I think we can, as a community, you know, you don't think of yourself as proud of your water treatment plant, but Batavia, I think it's going to have that opportunity to say that we are, given what we're doing down there.
The seeding and the trees going out there, that block was a mess for a long time, and now it's just really good.
Thank you, yeah. I appreciate the patience of all the residents as well. I know it was difficult.
Well, thank you for coming down.
Yeah, thank you for your time, again.
All right, moving then to item nine, presentation, Batavia Environmental Commission's quarterly update.
I do.
How do you want to make it bigger? Do you want to make it bigger at all?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Nikki Madacek, I'm the newest member here.
I'm Anna Roberts, I'm a student liaison from the high school.
So here we are, updating what we've done this year and what we have upcoming in our fourth quarter. Hard to believe we're finishing up 2024. I think the big news this year is we've added two members, along with Nikki, we've added Barb McKittrick, you might recognize her, she's already led, I think, two nature walks for the BEC.
She's with the Kane County Forest.
She is a naturalist with the Kane County Forest Preserve. And I think also, I want to give thanks on behalf of the commission to Chris Bong and all the city staff who answer quite a few questions the commission generates in our meetings, and they get back to us in a very timely manner. Oh, and then Anna Roberts has been a wonderful addition, and I'd just like to have her speak for a moment to talk about what she does with the information she learns at the BEC, brings it back to BHS and maybe the ECO Club.
Thank you. Yeah, hi, my name is Anna Roberts, I'm a senior at the high school, and last spring I was invited to participate in the Batavia Environmental Commission as a student liaison. This has allowed me to deliver information between the BEC and the Batavia High School's ECO Club, which often has participated in local environmental initiatives. This opportunity has allowed me to see the insides of how good policy is created and how it can truly impact our community, benefiting people and the environment. Thank you.
So Anna's big mission right now is to recruit next year's liaison, it's been wonderful to have her. And I know, oh gosh, skip that. There's, I think this is from the spring, this is Johnson Mount, we run a spring walk there, and boy, we had another really nice sunset tonight, so. And one of the big things we did this spring besides Johnson Mounts, we did a spring walk. It's nice to actually get back into Fermilab, you know, Fermilab was kind of closed down for quite a bit, and they've eased some restrictions, so we did a spring walk, I think we have a picture on the next slide. We did two library educational programs, composting for everyone, home decarbonization 101, part of our mission to educate. We're continuing our Batavia Big Trees program, we have more on that in a little bit, and also we're helping figure out what to do and how to spend the revenue from these bag fees. Yeah, there's our May 18th, so we had just walked the restored prairie, the interpretive trail on the far west side of Fermilab, and we're about to head into the big woods at Fermilab and their trail, and those smiles quickly disappeared as we got swarmed with mosquitoes. And Wally, who's one of the naturalists at Fermilab, was smiling, he says, "This is a good sign of a healthy ecosystem," so. I wanted to highlight this picture, I took this one a couple weeks ago, I was on the bike trail on the Fox River. So this is, we called it Fabian South, and it was a portion of Fabian Forest Reserve that was in Batavia, and Anna Baker, former BEC member, became a steward of the site, and we worked, I think, starting in 2018 to restore it, and from the bike trail right there, looking at the Fabian Bridge, and I think you can actually see Compania Building right above the bridge. You couldn't see the river from there, so after years and years of removal of invasive buckthorn, honeysuckle, and then seeding that area, there's kind of the results. And sometimes these restoration projects can look pretty horrific for the first year or two, and then once we get the seeds down, like kind of, we have this motto, in the first year, the plants sleep, the second year, they creep, in the third year, they leap, and they're certainly leaping, so if you get a chance, get out and take a look. Some upcoming events at the Batavia Public Library, on September 25, we have the EV Revolution, electric cars for everyone, so if you are thinking about getting an electric car, please come to that, we have a guest speaker, I'm sure we'll have testimonials from people in the crowd. A lot of people have questions, if an electric car is good for them, are they good for the environment, so it'll be a healthy discussion. And then we have an October 16 discussion on solar panels at the library as well. We have a seed harvest, we're going to go back into Fermilab and harvest seeds, have I turn it over to Nikki to talk about some of the things we're doing to close out the year.
So some of the 2024 goals we have, the Greenest Region Compact Climate Action Plan Implementation Plan, we have a landscaping initiative for native plants, and some upcoming topics we're going to be working on is pesticide use, dark sky initiatives, and natural area volunteer stewardship. We'd like to see more people getting involved with the forest preserves, getting out there, doing some volunteer work and helping to enjoy some nature. We'd love everyone to get involved, you can check out our website, we have a Facebook page that we're going to be updating regularly, and then anyone is welcome to come to our meetings, they're on the second Wednesday of every month, and we'd love to get any feedback or.
We can open up to questions from any council members?
Questions from the council members? Well, I'd just like to say on behalf of the city council, thank you for all the good efforts you're doing and all the things you're delving into. Obviously, some of these are going to be longer-term than others, but you know, you've got it on the table and you're letting people talk about it, debate it, you know, maybe some things we're going to advocate aren't going to work quite right, but we'll do it the best way we can, and we're very pleased that we have a group of citizens such as yourself to kind of give us, I'll call it a non-governmental word of advice as to how things should work, so I appreciate very much your efforts.
Welcome, it's our pleasure to do it, thank you.
Okay, then Main Street report.
Nice to see you all again, thanks for having me back. Just a couple of quick updates here from Main Street tonight. We had Block Party and Taste of Batavia on September 1, we had a gorgeous day for it and saw wonderful crowds of people. We wanted to thank again the city staff and the police department for all the help they provided at that event, as well as the Congregational Church of Batavia for hosting the Kids Zone. The Depot Museum held the car show for us this year on Houston Street, and if you didn't make it out, they had, oh Kate's here, so I have to make sure I get it right, 100 years of cars, so a car from each decade, which was really cool to see and well-received. And then the Mother's Club, as always, for hosting the pie bake-off. And then applications for our 2025 Boardwalk shop season are now open through December 15. This year, we're trying something new, we're offering a virtual Q&amp;A for those interested in applying. Beth and myself will be on that call, as well as Brittany Sabatino, who is a former boardwalk shop tenant and small business owner here in Batavia, and then Miranda Rodriguez, who is with the Small Business Development Center, just answering questions. There is a link to join that session on Main Street's website under our Boardwalk Vendor Information tab. And then applications for our indoor market are also open currently. The first day of the indoor market this year will be November 2, and that will be at Grainology Brewstillery again. And then just a couple of other downtown happenings we wanted to mention, 63rd Street Apothecary is now open at 10 East Wilson Street, they carry handmade soaps and body products. Illuminate Space, which is part of Light &amp; Pine Collective inside the Wilson Street Mercantile, will be recognized tomorrow as an Illinois Maker by the Aurora Area Conventions and Visitors Bureau at 3:00 PM, and that's at the Wilson Street Mercantile, 222 East Wilson Street. And then BEI is celebrating their 65th anniversary this Thursday, September 19, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Grainology Brewstillery, and that is an open house event. And then lastly, the Downtown Merchants are hosting a lantern walk on October 3 from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. They're inviting everyone to come out and enjoy an enchanting evening in Batavia, wandering between the illuminated lanterns and businesses, and the walk will begin at either the Wilson Street Mercantile or Harth and Hammer. So again, Wilson Street Mercantile at 222 East Wilson Street, Harth and Hammer at 161st Street, and there'll be lanterns lighting the path between the two businesses, so we hope that you all come out and enjoy. And that's all I have tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
That was October 3?
That is October 3, yes, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM.
On behalf of the city council, I just want to say that I think we have great appreciation for the way that Main Street has stepped up and really has put your feet on the street here in Batavia and really make things come together and work in a very favorable manner. And I've had a number of people compliment me, I've had other mayors in the area ask me, "How's Batavia bringing all this together?" And I say, "Well, we got a couple of great groups, the Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce specifically, and others that want to join in," and it's worked very well, and so I just appreciate when others start noticing what we're doing from a positive perspective, and we don't get ourselves at all in a highly controversial thing about somebody doesn't like the way something's done by somebody else, and all that stuff. You guys keep such a positive energy running here that I just want to commend you and thank you, and hope that we can continue to work with you to maintain that.
Absolutely, well, thank you so much. All right, see you next time.
Okay, move to the Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things, wanted to thank everybody who came out last Tuesday for our Taco Tuesday and Meet Your Aldermen. We actually ended up serving 125 plates full of food that night, and it certainly exceeded our expectations for how much participation we got from that, and it was a really great time, opportunity to meet with our residents on a casual basis, and looking to continue that into the future. Like to host events within the neighborhoods, invite the police and fire to join us so that the kids can interact with them and maybe some of the public safety vehicles that we've got. The Plan Commission is meeting this week, on the agenda will be several minor text amendments to the zoning code and also an administrative design review approval for an electronic message board that's along North Redant Road. The open house took place at the fire department this past weekend, and happy to report that over 1,000 people attended that event, and it was a lot of fun. The police department also attended that event, very, very fun. And along with the Batavia Avenue Road Diet, the electric department has completed installation of new LED street lighting, and so hopefully that will enhance the safety of that road and make things nice and well-lit. And then as well, all of the twinkle lights that were on North River Street have all been replaced at this point, so I hope that that looks nice and sparkly this weekend and also increase the amount of lighting that we have there. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes?
I was just going to say, I wanted to thank Public Works for the lighting on River Street, it feels like Christmas in September. So it's been really nice.
It's very nice, very nice, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're almost done here. That says other business, does anybody have any other business? All right, then we'll jump to the mayor's report, and mine's going to be short. I just want to share that I certainly try to keep my ear to the grindstone in the town and find out what people are saying, and we have somebody on the council here that has become quite a favorite of a lot of people, and that's Alderman Wolf, because he has become the TV sportscaster for the, well, he's been there for a number of years, but I think enough of us made enough noise about people not having the ability to get the station on their TV and whatever have you, that Alderman Wolf put together a little thing we now have posted on the computer, that if you can't get it here, you can try there. And this past weekend, I've had probably a half dozen senior citizens tell me, "This is just great, we can watch those games," and a couple of them have, groups of guys have. have come over to somebody's house, and they have a little social hour, and they watch the games, and they say it's just like watching a big-time game, the sportscaster we have between Mr. Lundberg and Mr. Wolf, they do a terrific, terrific job, and Batavia's so fortunate to have them, and of course, I guess what really sparks them up is that Batavia's on a, what, three-win season so far, and so there's, I'm sure that will continue to grow as time marches on, I was in a meeting last week in downtown Chicago with a group of area mayors, and several of them made comments to me about, "Well, it looks like Batavia's gonna shine in football again this year," and I said, "Well, it's too easy, too early to tell, but it certainly looks pretty good," and so we're getting watched by a lot of people, and thank you, Alderman Wolf, for your excellent commentary.
I will give credit on especially the shots that we have, we have a great camera crew and a great technical crew that runs everything at the ATV that makes that happen, one of them sitting right over there, Jim, that does the council meetings as well, so he's the guy out on the field every week that gets all the great shots that looks like the ball's coming into your living room when he's down on the field. And programming note for this week, we are not doing the game, it will be on the Marquee Network, the Marquee Network is pairing up with different student-led groups in the Chicagoland area, and since Batavia has really started that up for their, almost all of their high school sports, they're gonna try and broadcast this year, they will be providing the feed for the Marquee Network this week, so Friday night.
What channel that's gonna be?
I believe it's on 202 on Comcast is the Marquee Network.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's available online, I'd have to find that out, and my plan is to get that up posted before Friday, so everybody knows that.
You can do the streaming app, too.
Streaming, right.
Maybe get that posted on the city webpage?
Check the school district's website.
Whatever, I'm just saying that.
We'll do whatever we can to make sure we get it out there and posted, once we have a link to whatever else beyond the Marquee Network that it's gonna be available on.
When I go to the Homestead, or River Rain, or Heritage Woods, which I do, they're all about, they don't know much about technology, because they all graduated from high school before 1965, and they didn't have no computer in any school classroom they were ever in, and so they like it when we can tell them what channel to watch, and now that we have this big fan club developing around the Bulldogs, I just hope that we can get it out so that they know where to go to get the game, that's all we need to do.
I had class reunion this weekend, and probably 10 different people came up to me to talk about how they have watched a game, whether they live in California, Mexico City, Hawaii, that, you know, people that have watched games all around the country, so it's great, thank you.
Great, I appreciate what you're doing, it's the best it's ever been, and let's hope we keep it rolling, and as you know, last year we had a few sidesteps, and it didn't, a lot of things didn't get done, and I credit Batavia High School was really trying to get the thing organized and getting it into shape, so they're using it as a learning experience for a number of their students, and I don't know if many of you know, we've taken some of the Batavia High School students into the Homestead and a couple of the other places, and they've put on programs for them about how to get onto the computer, and how to get to these channels, and how it's supposed to be done, and I think we're planning to go again later this fall for another one, so that we can get all these folks tuned in, because after we get done with your football, then we got the basketball.
I watched all their basketball games last year, they did a really good job, it was fun to watch the kids do it.
Anyway, it's, Batavia's on the right track here, and we're making ourselves proud, and we've got things to be very proud of, so I'm very pleased that Batavia's got all this going for it. All right, do we need an executive session, Laura? Okay, would somebody make a motion to go into executive session?
I'm moved.
Moved by Solfa, second by Malay, for council to enter executive session, for call the roll.
Solfa? Baron? Lehman? Iyazi? Malay? Serone? Baraza? Lancy? Beck?
Aye.
Malone? Wolf?
And you are, says a aye as well.
Oh, thank you. So the 13, yes, no, no, is one absent.